Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order the Elk Grove City Council Regular Meeting. Today is Wednesday, November 13, 2024. The time is 6:00 p.m. Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council is recorded with closed captioning. The recording will be cable cast on Metro Cable, Channel 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. The recording will also be video streamed at metro14live.Cetcounty.gov. Tonight's meeting replays will be on Friday, November 15 at 1:00 p.m. and Monday, November 18, also at 1:00 p.m. on Metro, Channel 14. Once posted, the recordings of this and previous meetings can be viewed on demand at www.elkgrovescity.org or youtube.com/metrocable14. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. The Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the city council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular noticed agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the city council for more than three minutes. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please complete a blue speaker card, which can be found at the back of the chamber, and provide it to Assistant City Clerk Brenda Hager prior to consideration of the agenda item. With that, Mayor, I will be moving into the roll call. And for our roll call, I will start with Councilmember Robles.
Present.
Councilmember Spies.
Present.
Councilmember Soen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brewer.
Here.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Here. All right, thank you. Next up is our land acknowledgement. Assisting will be our Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. We honor, respect, and acknowledge Elk Grove's first inhabitants, the Plains Miwok, who lived as sovereign caretakers of this land and these waterways since time immemorial. We commemorate and advocate for their descendants, the Wilton Rancheria Tribe, the only federally recognized tribe in Sacramento County, who endure because of the bravery, resiliency, and determination of their ancestors, tribal members, and leaders.
All right, thank you for that. Next up is our Pledge of Allegiance. I would like to ask our Chief to lead us this evening.
Hats off, hand over heart. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, please join us for a brief moment of silence, please. Thank you. All right, next up is our approval of the agenda. May I get a motion?
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item.
Under Section 3 of the Closed Session, there are no Closed Session items on the regular agenda, which will advance us into Section 4, our Presentations and Announcements, starting with Item 4.1, A Proclamation Recognizing November 2024 as Native American Heritage Month.
Excellent. Assisting us this evening will be Councilmember Darren Soen.
Thank you, Mayor. Just before I begin, I just want to acknowledge, we're a city that's welcome to all, and by that, we've acknowledged all different kinds of heritages throughout the year. But I'm just especially proud about how we've come a long way in acknowledging from the land acknowledgement to this proclamation here, especially for, I believe, Native American Heritage who's been around longer than any of us. And it's nice to see that we're really integrating this into the fabric of all our operations. So, in honor of Native American Heritage Month, I would just like to say, whereas Native American Heritage Month celebrates and recognizes the accomplishments of the peoples who were the original inhabitants, explorers, and settlers of the United States; and whereas since time immemorial, the indigenous peoples of this continent flourished with vibrant cultures and were original stewards of the land, from generation to generation, invaluable cultural knowledge and rich traditions were handed down, which continue to thrive in the many and diverse Native American communities across our country and borders to the north and south of us today. And whereas, as the first to live on this land, Miwok and Nisam peoples and their traditions and values continue to inspire the ideals of self-governance and determination that are the framework of our community; and whereas Wilton Rancheria is the only federally recognized tribe in Sacramento County, after decades of hardship and struggle, losing and then restoring their federal recognition in 2009, having land put into a federal trust for the tribe by the U.S. Department of the Interior, Wilton Rancheria and their tribal citizens show strong resolve and perseverance; and whereas, under the guidance of tribal leadership, Wilton Rancheria has become a beacon throughout the state and across the nation for their continued advocacy for the preservation and advancement of tribal sovereignty. Now, therefore be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby proclaims November 2024 as Native American Heritage Month in the City of Elk Grove and urges all residents to take time to gain a deeper understanding of the diverse heritage of Native Americans, strengthen the preservation of Native American history, art, language, literature, anthropology, and culture, and renew awareness and appreciation working as partners with Native Americans to build sustainable and healthy communities. Signed this day, 13th of November. If we could have someone come up to you. Seth, thank you.
Welcome, everyone.
Vice Chairman.
Good evening, good evening. I just want to start by saying I'm not underdressed. But being that it is Native American Heritage Month, N7 is a brand from Nike. They put out a Native American brand, shoes, different designs, different things, so I thought it was fitting to, you know, show a little different side of that. But definitely have some words prepared for you guys tonight, but again, on behalf of our nation, it's an honor to stand in front of you and accept this proclamation. But good evening, Mayor, esteemed members of the Elk Grove City Council. On behalf of Wilton Rancheria, it is always an honor and privilege to stand before you. I would like to express my sincere gratitude for this resolution declaring November as Native American Heritage Month. This gesture is not just an acknowledgement of our people's history, but a recognition of our ongoing presence, culture, and contributions to this community. I am proud to accept this resolution on behalf of the tribe, the descendants of the original stewards of this land. For centuries, native peoples have been a vital part in the fabric of this region, and today, we continue to play an active role in shaping the future of this community. This resolution celebrates that, despite over 500 years of attempted genocide of our ancestors, our culture, and our traditions, we still stand here today, resilient and determined to build a future where Native American culture, history, and voices are heard and celebrated. As we reflect on Native American Heritage Month, we honor the strength and the perseverance of our ancestors who fought to preserve our culture, our language, and our traditions. But this month also serves as an opportunity to acknowledge the work that remains. It serves as a reminder of the importance of recognizing the rich diversity that defines our region, and it underscores our shared commitment to fostering an inclusive and respectful environment for all people. This resolution is a testament to the progress we have made together. We are proud of the partnerships that we have built with the City of Elk Grove, and we look forward to continuing our work together to ensure the well-being and prosperity of all our residents. As sovereign nations, we recognize our relationships with local governments and communities are not just transactional, but transformative. Together, we can create a future that honors the past while embracing the opportunities ahead. Once again, Tonga iKomo to the City Council for your leadership and support in recognizing Native American Heritage Month. We are grateful for your commitment to celebrating the rich history and culture of native peoples. On behalf of Wilton Rancheria, we look forward to continuing to work with each other, every one of you, as we move together in the future. Tonga iKomo.
So, before we come down, I thought it would be fitting, not only is this, of course, Native American Heritage Month, but this has been a huge last week and a half for the tribe.
Yeah.
And for those of you who either have been asleep or didn't watch the news, the Wilton Rancheria is now the majority owner for the new soccer stadium in, yes, Sacramento Republic. So we are just so proud of you. Our city is cheering you. We celebrate you. We know that you are committed to not only our city, but the entire region. These are your lands, and it's so wonderful to see your role expand. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, you are the first tribe to own a sports, a sports team or a soccer team, is that correct?
We're the first in the nation to own a professional men's sports team. I believe there's a tribe, the Mohegans in Connecticut, that might have ownership of a female basketball team.
So, I mean, that is huge, and so congratulations for your tremendous success, which is well-deserved and hard-earned, and we know that this is a transformative relationship, not just with the City of Elk Grove, but in the City of Sacramento, but everyone. You are not only great stewards of the land, but you are wonderful partners and friends. And to quote what you all have during your press releases, that indomitable spirit, that encapsulates all of you and what you've accomplished in such a short time. So congratulations to all of you once more. We will come down and present this to you. So proud of you, brother. I'm sure of it. I'm here for all of it.
She's not limping, that's good. Congrats. What a great week.
All right, next item, we have Item 4.2. And that is the California Sick Awareness and Appreciation Month for November 2024. Whereas the City of Elk Grove, the State of California, and our great nation are enriched by the unparalleled diversity of our residents, and whereas Sikhs, the sixth, sixth community, the six community, not the number six, are the fifth-largest religious group with more than 25 million around the world, an estimated 500,000 Americans are of the Sikh origin, more than a third of the nation's Sikh population resides here in California. And whereas Sikh Americans pursue diverse professions and walks of life, making rich contributions to the social, cultural, and economic vibrancy of the United States, including service as members of the United States Armed Forces, and have made and continue to make significant contributions in public service, agriculture, medicine, trucking, science, and technology, and distinguish themselves by fostering greater respect among people through faith and service. And whereas this month of November is significant for the Sikh celebrations of the Vali, the birthday of the first guru and founder of Sikhism, Guru Nanak Devji, in 1469, and installation of the Sikh scriptures as the final and eternal guru in 1708. And whereas today, the City of Elk Grove seeks to recognize the diversity of its community and afford all residents the opportunity to better understand, recognize, appreciate the rich history and shared experiences of Sikh Americans. Now, therefore be it resolved, that the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby affirms and proclaims November 2024 as the California Sick Awareness and Appreciation Month in the City of Elk Grove, and asks the community to contemplate and reflect, to inspire ourselves individually and our society collectively, to work towards a brighter future. Signed today, this day, the 13th, November 2024, by the City Council. Congratulations. I would like to call up all of the members of the Sikh community, and we have two speakers. First will be Amriksing, followed by Aman Dylan, but everyone can come forward and be a part of the presentation, so please, everyone, just come down. The two, you don't all have to speak, I promise. So, yes, so Mr. Singh here, and this is actually being presented to the Bradshaw Sikh Society, which is also where I worship, so you are seeing a lot of the parishioners here representing the Bradshaw Sikh Society, including the President here, President Adhila. Welcome this evening.
Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen and City Council, Member of City Council. First of all, we want to thank you, everyone, and citizens of Elk Grove for giving such a huge mandate to Singh Allen, and that's a kind of testimony of how Sikh appreciation and awareness month is spreading. Mayor Allen just took to the public service when we had a very tragic incident in Wisconsin, shooting, 2012. She joined Elk Grove Unified School District trustee and remained the president over there. And then afterwards, coming to the City Council, I mean, there is a huge effort, I would say, from City Council to spread this awareness, and we are so proud of it. And we just want to emphasize that Mayor Singh Allen is continuing the same legacy. The Sikh pioneers came here in 1880s, and they revolutionized agriculture here, and by 1920, there were 80,000-acre California land that they were doing agriculture and giving jobs during depression. And so they remained ever since then in a public life that they represented in 1914 to the U.S. Congress, records are which still available online, and they represented for their civic rights here and in India. So the torch that Sikh, you know, carry everywhere, torture freedom, and American spirit. So that both inspired our Sikh pioneers, who some of them went to India to liberate India from the British occupation. So this is a huge legacy, Pakistan thing, the World War I veterans who just went to Supreme Court in 20s. And so just for the civil rights of everyone, not alone Sikhs. So then, Dlip Singh Sound in 1956, he represented Asians, you know, for the first time, he became the first Asian and the first Indian and first Sikh Americans to be elected to the U.S. Congress. And so Sikhs remain very, always ready to serve the public because their gurus have given them such a wonderful vision, that we consider everyone, you know, equal. So one in all, all in one. So we honor the Creator, who is one in all and all in one, so that's the spirit that's always inspiring them to do the public service for everyone, wherever they are. So, and I think spreading this awareness and more and more, what Sikhs are looking forward to, to making public life better for everyone and free from hatred and sectarian kind of thinking, that is, you know, I would say a limitation of societies, many societies here. So, thank you so much, City of Elk Grove, and Singh Allen, Mayor Singh Allen. And Mayor Singh Allen, we are so proud that she became the first Sikh elected mayor, Sikh American woman elected mayor. And so her leadership is for us all, not only for Sikhs, and we are so proud of her. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Aman Dylan? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Amriksing. He has definitely highlighted contributions of Sikh Americans that came before us, and I want to congratulate my sister, Mayor Singh Allen, for winning the reelection successfully, and all the council members that are going to join her in her next tenure.
Honorable Mayor Singh Allen, esteemed members of City Council, and fellow residents of Elk Grove, Sasri Akal. Today, as we celebrate Sick Awareness Month, I stand before you with a heart full of gratitude for City Council's and Mayor Singh Allen's unwavering support in recognizing the contributions of Sikh community in Elk Grove. Your leadership in promoting the understanding and appreciation of our rich heritage and tradition is truly commendable. The Sikh community has been an integral part of American fabric for generations, and here in Elk Grove, we are proud to contribute to the vibrant tapestry of our city. We deeply value the city's commitment to diversity and inclusion, and we are grateful for the opportunity to share our culture and values with our fellow residents. Thank you for your ongoing efforts to create a welcoming and inclusive environment for all the residents of Elk Grove. Your leadership inspires us, and we look forward to continuing to work together to build a stronger and more united Elk Grove. Thank you.
Before I come down and present this to all of you, I also, this is, you know, it's a teachable moment for everyone, and it's also a month of remembrance in our community, in the Sikh community. Forty years ago, a tragedy took place in India, the 1984 Sikh genocide. And as we remember the atrocities that took place, it's also our commitment, just please keep in mind, many people live in our community that are seeking asylum because of those atrocities. So we come from many walks of life, but a lot of us are still suffering because we still haven't seen justice for our community. So may we remember all those that were, that were killed in 1984, and may we continue to keep their memory alive. Thank you. This is gonna be fun to take a picture, but. Okay, so where's Krista? She's gonna help us. Whatever she says, follow her. Okay, so we're gonna go up here. All right, let's, we're gonna come up here. Do you want us to go back, or is this good?
It would probably be better if you're all together.
Just be mindful of how tall you might be, tallest in the back. It's the honor system. Ready? Let's go over here, one, two, three. One more time, one, two, three. Thank you.
You're welcome to exit or stay, it's up to me. The gentleman right there with a 49ers jacket and red turban, that's my father, everyone, for those who don't know. He's almost 80, if you can believe that. All right. All right, continuing on to our next item, 4.3, A Proclamation Recognizing November 2024 as Global Entrepreneurship Month, and November 18 through 22, 2024, as Global Entrepreneurship Week. And assisting is Councilmember Robles.
All right. We have two individuals who we will be presenting. It's gonna be Arlene Miranda. Do you want to step up? Go first? And then, that is with Carlson Center for Innovation and Entrepreneurship.
Thank you. I want to express our gratitude to all the City Council members and Mayor Singh Allen. In recognition of Global Entrepreneurship Week, it is a testament to the City of Elk Grove and your commitment to fostering entrepreneurial opportunity, as you do with Pitch Elk Grove and the Invest Elk Grove program. The Carlson Center serves as a regional hub and platform for providing accessible entrepreneurial education, community, and support to enable startup founders of all backgrounds to explore and launch their businesses. As part of this effort, we are very proud to steward Global Entrepreneurship Week, which is a week-long celebration of innovation and entrepreneurship. It truly is happening all over the globe, and this coming week, we'll have events at the Carlson Center, as well as in the region, and I'm happy to highlight a few of these. The first is the Entrepreneurial State of the Union, which will be at the Carlson Center Monday, November 18 in the evening. And the following is, Tuesday, we'll have more events capped by Startup Happy Hour, which will be at the Limelight, and feature three entrepreneurs. Normally, there's just one, so there will be a panel of local entrepreneurs. And then Wednesday is a full day, starting with One Million Cups, where two entrepreneurs present their ventures for community feedback. And then that will be followed by Mentor Sprint, which is an opportunity for entrepreneurs to have 15 minutes each with three different advisors, so they'll get different insights and advice, and potentially a new mentor. It's speed mentoring instead of speed dating. And then it will conclude on Wednesday evening with NorCal AngelCon at the Growth Factory in Rockland, as a program that the Carlson Center and Growth Factory put together, and that is to create more opportunities for angel investors to invest in our local startups. So we hope that you will engage and hope to see you at, during Global Entrepreneurship Week.
Thank you.
Go ahead, yeah.
Arlene, you have the entrepreneur spirit, because you just went right into it, and I really.
Did I misstep?
I was gonna, I was gonna present the proclamation, but no, you went right into it, and that's, we need more of that, though.
You're very kind, thank you.
We need more of that. We need, you know, that's, that's what the entrepreneur spirit is, right? Folks who are willing to roll up their sleeves and get to work, and do it for the better of their community and better of their families, and that's what we need, and especially right now in our region, so thank you for going into that. I will go just a little bit on the proclamation. So, Global Entrepreneur Month, Global Entrepreneur Week, November 18 through the 22nd for 2024. Whereas most of the new job creations throughout the United States in the past decade have come from creative efforts of entrepreneurs, innovators and small businesses engaged in endeavors ranging from micro businesses to large-scale ventures. Entrepreneurs have been a key source of our economic innovation throughout our nation's history and society that has been improved because of the new ways of doing things that have been brought by innovation and the inventiveness. Small businesses are key driver in our economy and across the greater Sacramento region, in particular rural, underserved communities and accounting for two-thirds of the new jobs. The Greater Sacramento Region's week-long celebration for Global Entrepreneur Week is encompassed by dozen of local and regional events. Each designate a highlight ideas for start and how to run a business with the events including large-scale competitions, teaching entrepreneur skills in our region and higher education, connecting participants with potential collaborators, mentors and even inventors. Thank you for being here and thank you because you truly embody the entrepreneur spirit.
Thank you kindly.
And we'll go down there.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here.
Yes, thank you kindly.
Congratulations.
Thank you kindly.
You just hugged, so you can get a little bit. One, two, three. One more time, one, two, three.
Thank you.
We'll see you tomorrow morning?
Yeah.
I'm gonna have about five shots of espresso before I go. And could I have Jeremy or, and/or Angel Epstein? I'm gonna go a little bit into this one, tailor it a little bit specifically, but the proclamation for Global Entrepreneur Month, Global Entrepreneur Week, from November 18 through the 22. I'm gonna read a little bit of where I did not read prior. So, Global Entrepreneur Week is the world's largest celebration of innovators and job creators, launch their startups and bring ideas to life, drive economic growth and expand human welfare. The risk that you take as an entrepreneur is a truly great one. And it's that risk, sometimes it's that leap of faith that you have to take. And sometimes you don't want to take it, but you know that your idea needs to be shared with the world. So, truly thank you for stepping up and taking that leap of faith for us.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for having us.
First, Council, thank you for sharing the stage with us tonight, that being here in the chamber on the same night as the Sikh Awareness and the Wiltman Tree Tribe. It's an honor for us to be here when, when they get their recognition, which they justly deserve. We'd like to thank you guys for taking a moment to recognize the small startups that have been in Elk Grove for a long time. We're proud to have been here for almost 30 years now with our pet stores in both ends of Elk Grove, one on the west side, one on the east side. And we look forward to 30 more years. The ability for us to raise our kids in our businesses and go to local schools and local high schools and now off to college is a, is a prideful thing when you can do it all in the same community. Councilman Spies, many, many, many years ago, did a kids' club event involving honey production back in the day at our Laguna location, must have been 15 years ago, but it was, it's been a long time. So, once again, it's a proud moment for us to have served the community for almost 30 years. Our relationships with the Elk Grove Animal Shelter, the Elk Grove Police Department are all things that we benefit and, from ourselves and love being a part of. And being business owners of the community is a very proud thing. And it's, it is hard and it is wonderful at the same time. And thank you.
No, thank you. And for those who don't know, it's Pets2Go.
Thank you.
Yes. So, if you guys have pets, you guys already know where to go. We'll go down there.
Give you this.
Thank you. There we go. Thank you. Thank you. Awesome. Thank you, guys.
All right, next up is our Diversity and Inclusion Commission Annual Update. Presentation by the Commission.
Okay. Good evening. Okay, we could do a little better. Good evening. Thank you. I'm Tina Leavote, the Chair of the Diversity and Inclusion Commission, and I am pleased to share with you our annual update. So, as we all know, we are one of the most diverse cities in the country. And the City Council has a history of seeking the assistance of residents to educate and celebrate the community and its many communities, the community and its many communities that we have within us. What started as the Multicultural Committee in 2011 was reimagined as the Diversity and Inclusion Commission to support the importance of diversity, equity and inclusion in our city. Our 10-member-appointed commission serves as a resource to the city to engage the community and provide recommendations and information to the City Council. Our members reflect the diversity of our community, and many of them are here tonight. So, I'd like to introduce Raina Tarongo, Kelly Lee, and I'm sorry, I'm not going through the slides. Okay, thank you. I'm just talking. I know, and I'm usually better than that. I'm a pro. This is really weak for me. And Jessica Carter, our Vice Chair. So, as we've seen tonight, thank you, as we've seen tonight with our earlier items, recognizing national services that reflect our cultural heritage and community contributions is an important way to educate our community and celebrate our diversity. The Commission assisted with the development of a dozen proclamations presented by the City Council this year. For the third consecutive year, we came together at City Hall to mark the start of LGBTQIA+ Pride Month with our community. Commissioners also participated in a youth-centered pride event in collaboration with the community and CSD and joined our city and CSD staff at the Sacramento Pride March. Last month, we celebrated Filipino-American History Month during our fourth annual Cultural Connections Event at District 56. And I want to thank those who came out and attended all of the events that we have throughout the year. It really means a lot for folks to see our council members there. Community members shared their unique stories and provided performances that celebrated the many contributions of the Filipino community. Commissioners and city staff pulled together once again to host Elk Grove's largest cultural celebration in September. The event attracted an estimated 5,000 visitors and featured food, music, art and dancing that showcased Elk Grove's diversity. Oh, what? I know. When we work, we mean to work. And I'm gonna tell you, if you want to see somebody working hard, you bring Kelly out here with some garbage cans. That girl can work. So, looking ahead to 2025, as we look to 2025, the Commission is focused on bringing some proposed changes to the city's code of ethics to the City Council. We're planning another amazing Cultural Connections Event and sharing some news about how Elk Grove measured up in the Human Rights Campaign Foundation's Municipality Equality Index, a national barometer that measures how inclusive the laws, policies and services are in cities across the country. So, there'll be good news very soon, so just stay tuned. So, this concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, but I also just wanted to close with a statement that came to mind when I was thinking about making this presentation today. There's a quote that I always like to hear that says, "People that feel valued and appreciated will always do more." And I think one of the reasons why this commission is so successful and why not only the folks that are standing up here, but our whole commission is so committed and does such great work is the value and appreciation that we feel from each of you at the dais. So, I always say this, and I can't say it enough. Thank you for the support that we get from all of you for the work that we do. I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the great staff that supports our commission. Kristin, who again, notice, making sure I'm doing stuff right up here because she's heard in cats. So, Kristin, who does an amazing job, as well as Jason Jimenez with the Police Department. They really keep us on task. And much of the success that we have as a commission is really based on the really great support that we get from city staff. So, thank you so much because it really takes a team to make it all work. And it's really the team between our commission and the staff that support us. So, thank you.
Thank you for your excellent report and all of the great work that the Commission continues to do throughout the year and what's coming. I'm excited and looking forward to some of these new initiatives. So, again, you're, you're literally the best of Elk Grove. You represent the best of us. And you are our eyes and ears on so many things. So, thank you for your commitment and stepping up to serve. Thank you again. Any questions, comments from colleagues?
Thank you, Mayor. I just echo the sentiments and just thank you for acknowledging staff on that, too.
Yes. Absolutely. Yep, Councilmember Spies?
So, someone, well, they're gone now, but. I think that most, something, I think most of, someone I, I think most of you are familiar with is a fellow named Mark Jansen. He's part of the Interfaith Council, right? And he was presenting today at our Rotary Club. One of our, one of our global goals as Rotarians is peace. And so, we often think about, well, what is, we can think about peace across the world because the reality is, right now, there are people who killing each other, literally killing each other over ideology and religion and, and those sorts of things. So, it's easy to kind of understand how we can promote peace worldwide. But when we think about it locally, right, what is peace? And I can think of nothing better that to personify what peace is or how an organization working towards peace. Of course, the Interfaith Council, but of course, Diversity and Inclusion Commission and the work that you do. Because peace at home starts with understanding and feeling safe in our communities. And so, I want to thank you for promoting peace here in Elk Grove. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for that recognition. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. No, there's nothing. We love you all. Thank you. All right, next up is Item 5, Public Comment. At this time, I will open up the Public Comment Opportunity. We will start with Alan Vito III, followed by Hira Kulkarmi and Gayatri Devi.
Alan Vito III had to go. First of all, each and every one of you, congratulations on your still sitting here. I like it. I like it. And Ms. Mayor, thank you for all your kindness and direction in our city. You're doing a great job. Chief Davis, nice to see you, each and every one of you, man. It's good to see all your faces. I said I never wanted to really talk in front of you again unless I had some good things to say. And a lot of people have brought up the fact that you're gonna approve some more CUPs in Old Town Elk Grove. And myself being in small business and, and being so blessed with, with, with my business and how it's went, my family and everything. I, I promote small business, but I just want to hope that you guys could direct some kind of unity with all of us, where we could unite to be able to make this the safest synergy hub, whatever it is you want to do, nightlife, food, drinks. I, I like it. I think it's a great idea. But the thing is, is we don't want no shootings. We don't want no trash, no negativity, no people setting up, like, like serving illegal food across the street from different businesses because they know they can play off of that business because it's so busy. Because people, it's unsafe, dude. They run, they, they, they got a little buzz. They smell some food, they want to run across the street. How many months ago, that lady got hit walking back from the Happy Garden and, and was gonna go to Bob's and didn't go to Bob's and runs across the street and gets ran over by that car, right? They wanted the footage. You guys know about it. So, my thinking is, is if whatever you guys do with the CUPs or whatever you do in Elk Grove, if we could just all unite together to make it a safer fire, police, business, maybe do a, Bobby, you talked about a, a Mayor Bobby Singh, you talked about maybe some kind of workshop that we could all do, that somebody can implement, that we could bring, my, my employees, I worry about them. I worry about the safety of my employees. I worry about the safety of my clients. And I worry about this beautiful community of Elk Grove. The lady that talked on the, on the, on a meeting, I saw one, somebody sent me a video thing about complaining about stuff in the back alley behind my bar and all the negativity. When I was here five years ago over losing my business, my, my lease with my landlord, you know, they talked about the same negativity and they're worried about that that's what was gonna happen in the alley across the street where I was gonna do a business, where another bar is going in now. But if we, it, it's still going on. So, my thinking is, is please, if you guys are gonna do this, let's do it right. Because I've been here for 33 years. I'm in my 34th year, dude. And one shooting in Old Town Elk Grove is, look at what it did to Sacramento. Look at what it did to Doko. In Little Elk Grove, it's gonna tear it up. Thank you very much. Have a nice night.
Next up is Hira Kulkarmi and Gayatri Devi. Are you both speaking or just one? Three minutes each, so separately? Okay, so we'll start with Hira and then we'll go with Gayatri.
Namaste, everyone, and greetings. My name is Hira Kulkarmi. I am the founder and honorary president of an Elk Grove nonprofit, Vish Kaurani Foundation, that educates, encourages and empowers communities in India and the United States. I'm here with my colleague from the foundation, Gayatri Devi. Last week, Vish Kaurani Foundation organized its second Peace Festival, International Peace Festival, that brought together close to 300 individuals and organizations from diverse cultures and communities to support activities that foster harmony and peace. Sacramento County and many of the cities have the most diverse communities in the United States. This year, as part of our mission, the Vish Kaurani Foundation launched Peace Ambassador Awards to cities for their activities that foster harmony and peace among their citizens with diverse cultural and ethnic backgrounds. We are here to honor our Mayor Singh Allen and the City Council with this Peace Ambassador Award.
My name is Gayatri, and thank you for inviting us here today to speak about the peace festival we had. We had invited the recipients of the Peace Ambassador Awards to receive the award in person. However, due to scheduling conflict, the Honorable Mayor Bobby Singh Allen or her representative could not attend the festival. So, we thought to use this council meeting to give this award for the mayor's and Elk Grove City Council's proactive work. They do this work through many events in Elk Grove that celebrate diversity and foster harmony.
I have been a resident of Elk Grove for the past 34 years and was a school teacher here in Elk Grove Unified School District for 20 years. I have seen firsthand the challenges that students from different backgrounds face in getting acceptance and feel integrated, especially the immigrant community. I have witnessed, I have witnessed continued and consistent efforts by the city of Elk Grove in organizing multicultural festivals. by the city of Elk Grove in organizing multicultural festivals, celebrations of individual ethnic community festivals that bring together its citizens. You even have a senior citizen center that is bringing people together in their golden years, fostering individual peace. Working with interfaith groups in the city makes citizens appreciate commonality rather than differences. That is the reason we would like to present the Peace Ambassador Award to the mayor, Bobby Singh Allen, and the city council. I will be glad to answer any questions you might have about the foundation.
We would, yeah, we would like to.
Yes, please.
We are very proud of the city.
Thank you so much.
Very proud of this award.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have met before.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all, thank you all for your good work.
Oh, perfect.
Thank you for having us.
All right. Next up is Kirk Thompson, followed by Mark Graham.
Hi. So I want to start by congratulating Mayor Singh Allen, Mr. Spees, and Mr. Soon on winning your elections. I always hold a certain amount of respect for anybody who runs for elective office, whether I vote for them or not, or win or lose. There's, it's like getting in the ring. You got to take some punches and it's a different kind of fight. So I appreciate you guys. Now, this brings me to something that has been bugging me for a while now. It was the pay raises that you guys gave yourselves. Now, I'm going to say something that might give me a lot of dirty looks from my Republican family members at Christmas, but I supported your pay increases for all of you. I thought it was great. I had a problem with the timing of your pay increases. The subject of pay increase wasn't brought up until after the filing deadline to run for your positions. Madam Mayor, you once told me how difficult a decision it was for you to decide to run for mayor and how the final decision was made fairly late in the process. Mr. Soon and Mr. Spees, you both ran unopposed. Voting in favor of such a sizable pay increase after you've ensured no one else can challenge you for your seats has the appearance, the appearance, of being really shady. Now, Mr. Spees, I realize you voted against the pay increase. So I hope you, as the council member who represents me in my area, you'll take what I'm about to say, what I'm about to suggest, and turn it into action. I recommend this council create a rule that limits future votes on pay increase to non-election years or at least three months before the filing deadline during an election year. Considering this council hadn't increased its pay in the 12 years, I think it was, prior to this one, it's unlikely that the next pay increase will affect you in any way. But making a small step towards eliminating even the appearance of impropriety among future mayors and councils seems like a no-brainer to me. I just wrap up. I want to make it clear that, again, I did support the pay raise you guys gave yourself. I don't have any problem with it. The timing of the process is what was bugging me. One of the reasons that was mentioned in favor of the pay increase would be to encourage more people to get involved in local politics and run for local office. I agree with that. I think it's a great reason. That's why it's future, that's why it's important for future pay increases to be cited much further in advance of an election than what you guys provided this year. I mean, who knows? If I had known that there was going to be that kind of pay increase, Spees would be sitting in my seat right now. All right. But seriously, though, please consider doing something to limit the appearance of impropriety for future pay increases. Because when I talk to Elk Grove residents, most people generally like what you do. All right, for the most part, just, and I think, Mayor, I saw some of your election results. I think most people were pretty happy. But the people I talk to just are hesitant about how you guys go about it. And this is one of those cases. So please take a look at that and consider the suggestion I provided tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Next up is Mark Graham, followed by Lynn Wheat.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Mark Graham. I live in Elk Grove. It's been a long time. I'm writing, talking to you about the email I sent this afternoon. I see it made it into the green sheets at the back of the room, which means that you all received it. I hope you had a chance to read it. But anyway, at the risk of more or less following what I wrote, I'm going to follow it. To put it briefly, the city has inadequate staffing. Only one investigator or detective for financial crimes, which are expected to continue to grow. There are way too many cases for this one detective to handle, 125 cases. The cost to the residents is that crimes remain unsolved and uninvestigated. The, as you know, the district attorney can only prosecute upon a referral from the city. I made three specific recommendations. The council, number one, the council should hold a closed-door session with the Police Department and in particular, the Investigations Unit to determine the extent and scope of the city's, of the unit's caseload, the needs for new financial crime investigators, and to what extent the city could solve the understaffing problem by adding one, two, or four new investigators for financial crimes. My second recommendation is the city should, if possible, hire one to two new investigators within the current budget. My third recommendation is the city should provide for adding two to four new investigators in the next budget. All right, so discussion. Here are some of the underlying facts. I'm halfway through the time. Financial crimes and property crimes are the biggest category of crime in Elk Grove. The incidence of financial crimes has been growing as and is expected to continue to grow. As you all know, the city has a $374 million budget. The city has only one financial crime investigator or detective. The city's sole financial crime investigator has 50 cases now and another 75 cases pending. And when you, if you hold the closed-door session, you'll hear from your Police Department exactly what that means. The city needs, in my opinion, and from what I've heard, between two and four more detectives to investigate financial crimes. Ideally, to do it right and really serve the residents, you will add four more investigators for financial crimes. And then I included some suggested questions that you might ask when you hold this closed-door session, which I hope you do. Ask how many cases a financial crime detective can successfully work on at one time. Ask how much time your current detective is able to devote on average to each case. Ask how long it takes on average to solve each crime or otherwise dispose of it. Ask whether the city's one financial crime detective is ever going to catch up on these 125 current cases. And ask what is the cost to the residents of the city having only one financial crime detective? I'm about out of time.
Thank you.
I hope you'll follow my recommendation. And I appreciate it.
I urge you to connect with our police chief here, maybe in the hallway, or do we have someone else?
Yeah, we'll have our Assistant Chief, Paul Solomon. We'll make contact with you right outside the door.
After the meeting?
As soon as we're done.
Right now.
Excellent. Oh, okay. That's great. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. All right. Next up is Lynn Wheat, followed by Suzanne Pesci.
Good evening. My name's Lynn Wheat. I'd like to congratulate you, Mayor Singh Allen and Darren Soon and Councilman Spees for your reelection. But I'm here to talk about something else tonight. So next Thursday is the Great American Smokeout. The Great American Smokeout is an event hosted by the American Cancer Society and is an opportunity for people who smoke to commit to healthy, smoke-free lives for not just a day, but year-round. As a nurse, I have long supported and encouraged people to quit smoking and want to bring to your attention next Thursday. We need to protect our children from big tobacco and their lobbyist activities. More than 2.5 million and million middle and high school students currently use e-cigarettes. 84% of these students use flavored e-cigarettes. Most e-cigarettes contain nicotine, a highly addictive chemical that can harm developing adolescent brains. Flavored tobacco products, including e-cigarettes, make it easier for students to become addicted to nicotine and increasing their risk of tobacco-related illnesses, including cancer. The idea for the Great American Smokeout grew from an event held back east in 1970. Arthur P. Mulaney asked people to give up cigarettes for a day and donate their money to a high school scholarship fund. As Mayor Bobby Singh Allen and previous school board, I am suggesting you make a goodwill jester and donate the $2,500 your campaign received from R.J. Reynolds Tobacco to our High School Health Academy or Scholarship Fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Suzanne Pesci. And that's our final speaker, unless I get another blue card.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. Congratulations on your reelection and your ability to serve the people of Elk Grove for another period of time. For the record, my name is Suzanne Pesci. And as you know, I'm a longtime resident of Elk Grove, almost 50 years in the rural area, almost 40 years. I live in a neighborhood within the floodplain fringe of the Consumis River. And many of the parcels in my neighborhood border Deer Creek of the 100-year floodplain and the, of the Consumis River. In the current Zone 13 flood study area of 2024, my neighborhood is called the retention basin for floodwater for the watershed. My neighborhood and others, as you may be aware, are always in the Cal OES evacuation zone. In 20, in 1997, some of us who had reservations at the Slough House Inn picked up our New Year's dinner by boat. In 2017, the trestle went down. And in 2023, the extreme water year, for the first time in history, Deer Creek overran its banks. And there was a breach in Freeman, on Freeman Road, the water levee. We are behind 10-year levees. We have a 1-in-10 chance every year of flooding. And each year, as weather changes, that risk becomes higher and higher. And it becomes more and more precarious living in our area. As these new residents move in, our new neighbors, they all, everybody needs to be made aware of their responsibility to themselves for their own safety and to the neighborhood for the neighborhood's safety with regard to drainage and with regard to retaining all of the natural swales, all of the natural drainage features which were employed by the county in designing and approving these developments in our area, which have kept us safe. And I really have to applaud city staff. I have been talking to them for many years. Darren Wilson, I don't know if I caused his retirement over this issue, maybe. Currently, my best friend, Christopher Jordan. City engineering staff, Leslie Pickett, has been very helpful, very, very understanding, always available to listen to my concerns. So I am very, very supportive of the ordinance coming up. And I'll speak to that. But I want to suggest in this public comment period that the city develop a public engagement and outreach plan to reach out not only to the old residents in the neighborhood who may have forgotten their drainage responsibilities to maintain the safety of all of us, but to inform the new residents coming into the area that I know are not aware of where they have moved into. I had a neighbor downstream from me say that, well, neighbor said, no, there's never any water in the ditch out here. And I guess I was polite enough not to say. I don't think you've lived long, out here long enough for you to say that. So my suggestion is outreach and engagement plan. I am very willing to volunteer to help the city.
Thank you. Thank you. I don't have anyone sign up to speak, so that will conclude public comments. So I will officially close the public comment period and go on to our next item, our city manager's report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Vice Mayor, Members of the City Council, Jason Bearman, your city manager. Several items to report on this evening. First of all, an upcoming activity called Fries with the Good Guys. Residents are invited to stop in at McDonald's at 8361 Sheldon Road next Wednesday, November 20th, from 4:00 to 6:00, for Fries with the Good Guys. This event continues to offer opportunities for our community to spend time with our police officers. See the Police Department's social media accounts for more information. Next Wednesday, November, also on November 20th, Abode Communities will be hosting the second community meeting to discuss their proposed development at Sheldon Farms, the development at the southeast corner of Sheldon and Bruceville Roads. The open house starts at 6:00 PM and will be at the Valley High North Laguna Library. This is related to a family affordable housing project that we've discussed previously. The Youth Commission has launched a survey to learn more about Elk Grove's grade 7 through 12 students. The Commission will use survey feedback to structure and plan future events and programs and encourage the teens you know to visit the city's website to participate before the survey closes on November 22nd. The city of Elk Grove and the Consumis CSD are looking for the community's help to name five future parks in the city. Naming suggestions should reflect Elk Grove's history, celebrate someone important, or reflect the area's geography or environment. Residents may submit ideas by December 1st at consumiscd.gov. The Send a Smile program is something we've been doing for the last five years or so. Holidays can be a lonely time for older residents without family. The city has once again partnered with senior living facilities to identify seniors who could use some holiday cheer. The Send a Smile Project will distribute holiday greeting cards to nearly 1,100 Elk Grove seniors this year. You can pick up a card-making kit at City Hall before December 16th or while supplies last. Kits include everything you need to create a special holiday wish, pre-addressed stamped envelope, card stock, stickers, et cetera. For more information, please visit the city's website. Before the city council's next meeting on December 11th, remember, we skipped the second meeting in November, there'll be several community events that the city either sponsors or produces. I want to extend my thanks to staff as well as our nonprofit partners who work so hard to make the holiday season special. But here's a couple of events that are coming up. Gobble Wobble, which is a Thanksgiving 5K and family fun run, which is on November 28th. We have the Old Town Elk Grove Dickinson Street Fair on November 30th. The Illumination Holiday Festival on December 7th at District 56. Holiday Festival on December 7th at District 56, and also the Holiday Parade of Lights, also on December 7th. In accordance with the city holiday schedule, City Hall will be closed November 28th and 29th for the Thanksgiving holiday. The Animal Shelter Special Waste Collection Center will also be closed. Public Safety and Trash and Recycling Collection Services will operate on a normal schedule that week. And that concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Thank you for your report. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you. We'll move on to our next item, which is our consent calendar. This time, I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity, and I have Suzanne Pesci signed up for item 7.15.
Good evening, and for the record, my name is Suzanne Pesci, longtime resident of Elk Grove and resident of the rural area within Zone 13 of the county 2024 flood study area. So I have, as I said in my previous comment, I am very, very supportive of the city's municipal code amendment with regard to drainage. And I think I talked about this about maybe two years ago with Shahab Arary. We talked about the necessity of it and letters going out and residents being made knowledgeable of the fact that, of the area that we're in and of their responsibilities. I am on the State Drought Task Force, and I am also a member of the County Drought Task Force SB 552, and they are going to be including flood within their implementation of SB 552. And I'm wondering if maybe we could somehow coordinate through that, with the county in order to get the word out. I mean, there are many, many ways of doing this with residents. Not everybody reads the paper, but websites, dashboards, the city newsletter. Letters are going out, I know, to people that, you know, drainage ditches need to be cleaned out. But I do think that it needs to be more than just letters, threats, and fines. I think people really need to understand where they live, behind 10-year levees, the risk to all of us in this city, not just those in the rural area, and the importance of all of us working together and understanding where we live so that we can all be safe and really enjoy living here. I just think that this is so important, and I've talked about it just for so many years. And I'm, you know, I'm willing to help in any way that I can, and so, reach out. I'll help you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your feedback on that item. I'm sure Mr. Jordan will be following up, or Mr. Warner, I should say.
Yeah, I'll just add that we have started issuing letters to residents in the rural area, and any resident in Elk Grove for that matter that has a drainage easement on their property, informing of their obligation and responsibility to maintain those drainage easements free of any obstructions, to keep the water courses clear so that flood management is maintained.
That's right.
All right. Very good. Thank you. All right, seeing no other public or other comments for a consent calendar item, I will close the public comment opportunity and look for a motion for consent.
Still moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, next item, item 8.1.
Item 8.1, the public hearing to consider ordinance amending the Old Town Special Planning Area relative to bars, breweries, wineries, and brew pubs.
Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen, members of the Elk Grove City Council, Antonio Ablog, planning manager, here to present to you tonight item 8.1, which is the Old Town Special Planning Area Amendment. This is for bars, breweries, wineries, and brew pubs. Again, tonight, we are here to ask the City of Elk Grove City Council to adopt an ordinance that would approve an amendment to the Old Town Special Planning Area to increase the allowed conditional use permits for bars, breweries, brew pubs, and wineries from an existing three limit to six. As far as some background on the Old Town Special Planning Area, the Old Town Special Planning Area was originally established by Sacramento County in 1985, and when the city incorporated, there was a comprehensive update that was completed, that was completed and adopted by the city council in August 2005. There have been several comprehensive reviews and updates to the Old Town Special Planning Area. Those resulted in some minor changes to the language and land use allowances in the Old Town Special Planning Area. Those were conducted in 2008 to 2010 and 2013 to 2014. As the Old Town Special Planning Area was originally adopted in 2005, the land use allowance for commercial uses really only included commercial convenience uses. You can see the uses listed on the screen before you. That included bakeries, candy stores, delis, drugstores. It did include a line item for the allowance for restaurants within the Old Town Special Planning Area. In 2018, we did start receiving inquiries from prospective businesses that wanted to locate in Old Town that were classified as alcohol-only serving uses, similar to bars, breweries, and wineries, where the majority for sales were for alcohol, not necessarily serving food, but they could serve food if they wished to. But again, since the Old Town Special Planning Area only allowed for restaurants and not any of these alcohol-only serving uses, we took, planning staff took forward an item to amend the OT SPA at that time. This resulted in an allowance for conditional use permits. Those are permits granted by the Planning Commission that would allow for alcohol-serving uses such as bars, taverns, brews, brew pubs, and breweries. Specifically, those relate to California State Beverage Section License Types, License Types 40, 42, and 48. Those are generally alcohol-only serving businesses. Type 40 can serve beer, type 42 can serve beer and wine, and type 48 can serve beer, wine, and liquor. This category of alcohol-serving uses also includes License Types, Types II and II. Type II is for a winery, and type II is for a brewery. Those License Types don't necessarily require the actual wine-making or brewing operations to be on site. They allow those businesses to have satellite licenses where they could serve their, the wine or beer they make at satellite locations. Again, these License Types don't require the serving of food, but they allow it. And it's important to note, bona fide restaurant, bona fide eating establishment, as is codified in California State ABC License requirements, an actual restaurant does not require one of these CUPs that's required in the Old Town SPA. A restaurant can serve alcohol without a conditional use permit in the Old Town Special Planning Area. So when we made this change to allow issuance of CUPs for these alcohol-serving uses in the Old Town SPA, there was a limit adopted by city council. That limit only allowed for three of those conditional use permits to be issued within the Old Town Special Planning Area. Tonight, the request is to bump that limit up from three to six. As far as the current state of the Old Town Special Planning Area, we, earlier this year, I believe it was August, the Planning Commission did issue the third CUP for an alcohol-serving use. That was for the Elk Grove Pub, just west of the railroad tracks. Previously, conditional use permits were approved for Dust Bowl at Railroad Street and also for the Quatza Brewery. That original CUP was approved under a different name, but now operates under Quatza. And I just wanted to note that Bob's Bar, that was a legal bar before the CUP requirement went in place, so that is a legal non-conforming bar. So no additional CUPs may be issued because the third CUP has been approved by the Planning Commission. Staff is aware of several businesses that are seeking to include alcohol sales or tasting within the Old Town Special Planning Area. That would include wine tasting facility for local wineries. A use like that would require a CUP, which we are at the cap right now. As far as the CUP reviews themselves, as with any use permit, line item in the code, those CUP, the CUP request tonight to increase the cap does not approve any specific project. It only allows projects to come in for review. Each project would be reviewed and conditioned on a case-by-case basis based on their operation characteristics, whether we have to approve specific hours of operation, approve any noise attenuation efforts for any outdoor areas. Those are things we'd work with staff to condition as CUPs are submitted and go through the process. We understand that increased activity in Old Town could lead to more activity and more pedestrians crossing the railroad along Elk Grove Boulevard. That is also something we look out for when reviewing these businesses. And with any business that includes the sale of alcohol, we'd continue to coordinate with the police department on each of these conditional use permit requests and seek their guidance on any specific conditions that we need to include, any operational characteristics that we need to look out for as we review these on a case-by-case basis. This was brought to the Planning Commission back in October. We did have several speakers attend that hearing. One speaker expressed concern that the project was not presented to the Historic Preservation Committee for review prior to the Planning Commission. Just want to assure the city council that if one of these CUPs were to come in for, to go into a historic building, that project, the full project, would be brought before the Historic Preservation Committee if there were any changes to that historic building to effectuate the business as an alcohol-serving business. We also had comments, there was concern that allowing additional CUPs for alcohol-serving uses would exacerbate existing concerns related to noise and disorderly conduct associated with existing establishments and their patrons. Based on those concerns raised, code enforcement staff has begun their review of operations of existing businesses and will be working with any operators as necessary to come into compliance with both any city land use regulations or code regulations and any state regulations as they relate to licensing for those businesses. At the conclusion of the hearing, the Planning Commission did vote unanimously to recommend the approval of these, the increase of CUPs to the city council, noting that the proposed amendment does not approve any development project, and each project that would come in would be reviewed on a case-by-case basis. As far as environmental, the California Environmental Quality Act, no further environmental review is necessary for this project. The approval of bars, breweries, wineries, and brew pubs, increased allowance for those uses in the Old Town Special Planning Area does not increase the density or intensity of development in Old Town, and the review of any CUP must comply, will ensure that those businesses will comply with the existing development standards in Old Town. So with that, staff concludes our presentation. We are recommending that the city council find no further environmental review is necessary pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act and adopt an ordinance approving an amendment to the Old Town Special Planning Area to increase the allowed CUPs for bars, breweries, brew pubs, and wineries from three to six. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and we also have Jose Mendez, my counterpart in code enforcement, should he have any questions about how the CUPs would be enforced.
All right. Excellent. Thank you for your presentation. We'll save the questions for afterwards. At this time, I will declare the public hearing is now open and open up public comment opportunity. We have three people signed up to speak. We will start with Alan Vito, followed by Lynn Wheat.
That might have been Alan Vito that had to leave earlier, so...
So is there someone in the hallway?
We'll do a call for Alan Vito if he wishes to provide any public comment.
I'll move on.
Hope that he'll make his way into the chamber.
We'll go on to our next speaker, and if he reappears, we'll take him then. So we'll go on to Lynn Wheat.
Good evening. I'd like to talk about our Old Town Special Planning Area, and I want to talk about it from broad terms. I want to talk about, we're supposed to be updating that, and this updated vision for the Special Planning Area was to begin, began in 2019, and several meetings were held in 2021, and we were supposedly supposed to have a draft the summer of 2022, a draft SPA. And then, in the winter of 2023, we were supposed to have that go to city council and planning commission. But with no public updates or documents for a project, our mayor announces on June 28th, 2023, that Old Town will become a historic gas lamp district, referring, of course, to the famous San Diego Entertainment Center. So I'm thinking that there's something else going on and that we have the Old Town secret plan. And the reason that I think that is because over the last couple of years, a number of properties have been sold in that area, and we still have no SPA that's been released to the public. So does this mean the secret plan will eventually be released and we'll see what's going on? Or are we going to have CUP changes one project at a time, and before we know it, the people that live down there, that will most be impacted by this special secret plan, won't have an opportunity to fight it off, and they won't have what they thought that they were going to get at one time? So I'd like some honesty, especially knowing that somebody's going around offering to buy up properties. What is going on? What is the secret plan? We deserve to know, since we, as the general public and taxpayers, will be paying for a lot of this. Thank you.
Next up is Peggy Forseth Andrews. I don't think Mr. Vito has reemerged, so...
I think they had an emergency.
Okay. There was a, I don't know if this was the senior or the junior, so...
Yeah, they both were here and both left.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Peggy Forseth Andrews, and I've been before you before, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm here speaking personally and not on behalf of the whole Historic Preservation Committee, and I would like to make that clear to you. I'm the individual that voiced some concern that this had not come to the Historic Preservation Committee. For those of us that have been around for a while, and those of you that are as formed as you are council members, you know the SPA was created to protect the historic district. At that time, there were certain numbers that were put on the kinds of businesses they were looking so that the area remained diverse and that it was going to be a thriving area. I'm not here to debate the issue itself. What I'm here to ask you to do is to please wait on making a decision. To not bring this before the Historic Preservation Committee for their review and their comments, in my opinion, is disrespectful to the committee because part of their charge is to look at historic district plans. You cannot separate out buildings from the district itself, and that's basically what we're being asked to do. I respect, and I want to say I respect most Mr. Jordan and Mr. Ablog very, very much, but we as a committee see that as a total area. We had no idea this was happening until some of us got letters about it going to happen. This is not the first time that there's been a change or a proposed change to the SPA that the Historic Preservation Committee has not been informed prior to that happening and asked for input into that, and that's part of our charge. That's part of what you ask for us. That's what historic preservation is. When I called and inquired why we had not been informed, I was told that it was a land use issue. It was not a historic issue. This is happening within the historic district. All we're asking for is the ability to review it and to give our review to you. It also did not go to the Old Town Foundation, and the Old Town Foundation was not asked about it and asked to give their input to it. As our city council, I would ask that you see us as the gatekeepers for that area to give you the information that you need in order to make a decision that is a community-based decision so that you can say, yes, we did have input from our Historic Preservation Committee. Yes, we did have input from the community people we sent letters to, and yes, the Old Town Foundation was also contacted. So I'm here about process, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. That concludes our comments. So I will close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing is now closed and open it up for council deliberation and questions and comments. We'll start to the left. Councilmember Suwen.
Thank you, mayor. First, I'd like to start by asking Mr. Jordan and then Mr. Ablog if you could maybe elaborate on the response that Ms. Forseth Andrews talked about to her question about why we didn't bring it to them.
Yeah, I think at the most simplistic level or straightforward level, historically, we've not taken the use table amendments questions before to the Historic Preservation Committee. That's, it's just not been something we've done. I think the last three or so that we've done over the last, maybe the last decade, I think the tattoo parlors, this issue originally, and there was one other I'm forgetting about. There were, I think there were three of them, if I'm counting correctly, that they had not gone previously. Doesn't mean they couldn't, but that's not been our process to date.
Okay. You know, I'm, I'm just trying to think back, 2018, I mean, that's six years ago. I do, and even before my time on the council, I do recall, there's always been this desire to revitalize Old Town. And when the city stepped in, it started with the acquisition of the Railroad Street property and partnering and trying to get that going, and it was successful with DNS Development, Dust Bowl coming in, now Slow &amp; Low and the units back there. Whether it had much influence it had on these other businesses coming in, pros and such, I mean, I don't know. I hope that that was, because that was the intent of why we spent the money on that. So a point is, it's proving successful, and I do support this concept going... So a point is, it's proving successful, and I do support this concept going forward of allowing some additional CUPs. Again, I was trying to recall, I had some conversations with our city manager about what was the, what was the rationale behind the three, and I think it probably was due to, due to citizen input and concerns, and so I appreciate that, and so I think this is a measurable approach with some three additional CUPs and maybe looking forward, you know, to the future to do something different if, if more CUPs come forward. However, I also appreciate the comment I heard from Ms. Forsyth Andrews, and while I do understand if it's a land use issue, we're not actually talking about buildings and maybe why that's, perhaps that's the rationale why they weren't consulted. I do think this, we always talk about this being a special area, and it is a, it's an, it's really an isolated area that the Historic Preservation Committee and, and Old Town Foundation are focused. So I, I, I think this would, this would be worthwhile to give them an opportunity to, to take a look at it. I don't want to hold up anything, so if, I would like to hear also if there are, are time pressing matters that we're, that we're dealing with here, but I, I think giving that, giving the opportunity for review of this is appropriate. I'd also want to add and add the similar thoughts to what Mr. Vito mentioned to you earlier, which is about the safety of our community, and I think there's some pretty dark areas down there in Old Town, lack of lighting in the alleyways. And so I, I think while things are in its infancy, I'd like to ask my fellow colleagues and to, for support to give direction to, to our chief to do a comprehensive safety plan. Let's, let's take a look at how we can, whether it's better lighting, security, you know, for my, maybe cameras type of thing in those dark alleys, whether it's personnel, more, you know, more just more random patrols down there. Chief, if you have any additional thoughts or initial thoughts, I'm open to that, but some sort of comprehensive safety plan so that as more businesses come in and people are having a good time down there, you know, I just want to make sure it stays a good time and that they feel safe, and I want us to establish a culture that, you know, it is going to be family-friendly, resident-friendly, neighborly, and so we don't get a reputation like, and I don't, forgive me, New Orleans, but I've never even been there, but you know, I hear, I just, sometimes there are stories about things that happen in, at some of these other towns, and so I'd love to make sure that our, our city just maintains that safety element, and people can, can enjoy it even as, and I hope the area continues to thrive. So I'll stop there for a minute and maybe see some input from the chief.
Yes, sir. We absolutely can. I think we can, we work with our city partners when we establish most of these businesses as well. We do the SEP TED program, which is the environmental approach to safety and security. And as we continue to grow as a police department and as a city, you know, we've had talks already about creating some sort of a, a district where we, police specific to those areas for the entertainment growth in our city. So we've started some of that planning, and long-term, we'll, we'll try to establish maybe a little bit greater communication about that as we continue to grow with our, with the city.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then maybe a report back when you have something that's specific to this area? Okay, thanks. So I, I'm open either way, whether we, you know, we approve this, but we don't implement it until they've had a chance to review it, and we accept, you know, maybe accept their comments to report back, or.
Let me offer up some thoughts as well. I like where you're going, because I have similar thoughts. First, I do want to ask, is this time sensitive?
I know we have interest from a couple of people that have kicked the tires on something, but I don't think there's any, there's not currently anything in process.
Because reality is, we have the holidays, we have Thanksgiving, we have Christmas, so I feel like we can buy some time here.
Yeah.
I do think it makes sense in terms of due diligence. My concern is not so much procedural as much it is the safety and security. And I've heard from a few residents, and I've talked to a few businesses, we, and like my council member colleague here stated, you know, these bars and breweries obviously are for adults. However, there are restaurants that are nearby as well that are, we want to attract the family businesses. We want to make sure that the patrons and those that work in these different businesses feel safe. We don't want to create a reputation of having an unsafe area. And so to that end, I would like to see the safety and security integrated into this so that as we grow this area, and we want this to be a destination, because there is so many great things happening there, great places to visit. And so as the community grows and as the word gets out that Elk Grove is open but for business, but particularly in Old Town or the historic district, or however we want to phrase it, that part of our, you know, our city, we do want to do it safely. Some of the concerns, of course, are, you know, business practices not being uniform, and what I mean by that is some will be very strict and use and enforce the laws to the extent that they can, and then some businesses are very relaxed, business or businesses. I just don't want to put anybody under, under the bus here, but what we do want are businesses that serve alcohol to be compliant with the law, to enforce the law, to make sure that we aren't creating situations of safety concerns. So I, I'm mostly concerned about the safety and security. I, I accept what you're saying in terms of process as it relates to the Old Town Foundation and the Historic Preservation Committee, only because, so, let's back up. We've had an opportunity to discuss this. What would you say, how long?
We brought an initial item to you, I believe, at the end of August, looking for some initial direction if there was interest.
Okay.
Planning Commission was in October, but then the prior discussions a few years ago where we initially set this out, so it's been some, a little bit of off and on conversation.
We've had conversations, so, but from the, when we brought this to the council and then to the planning commission, just even through the noticing process, we've had opportunities to engage.
Sure.
And, and get feedback, be it not in a formal setting in another, in another format. So we do have that. So I, I accept what you're saying. However, for me, the greater concern is the safety and security. So to that end, because it's not time sensitive, and we do have the holidays coming up, I would like to incorporate that so that we have a strong, you know, we're in a strong position and can fully support this. I want more businesses to come there, I want them to thrive, and so I support what we're doing. I just want to make sure, and whether we do that beforehand or do it afterwards, I mean, I trust all of you to do the work, so I would be okay to move forward, but I just want to make sure that we factor in safety and security, that it is a part of this, and that's consistent, most importantly. I know that we've had trailers there and we've had, you know, monitoring, but then didn't have it, you know, a few weeks later. So the consistency, I think, is also very important as well. So I support what we're doing. So I want to hear from you if you think, you know, I'm okay postponing this until January, so it gives you time to do the other work, or I need to hear assurances that the safety and security is going to be implemented and what that looks like.
Yeah.
And an opportunity to upgrade it.
So, so I think.
They go hand in hand, is all I'm saying.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I think, I mean, at the most fundamental level, yes, we can get with PD and talk some more about this and bring back some more information for you, and we can talk about whether that's a date certain or not. I will say that in terms of these individual businesses, having them under a conditional use permit with certain performance obligations that are tied to the issuance gives us the hammer to be able to say, those that are not performing, we have the ability to revoke that permit, shut down the operation if you're a bad actor, we get that. When we have businesses that are coming in as an allowed by right use, and certainly there are certain establishments along the corridor that we're trying to fit in under a certain definition and maybe really don't fit under there, that's a different type of exploration that we need to do. That's not subject to this, but it is absolutely an enforcement issue. That's something, as Antonio mentioned in the presentation, that we're doing investigation around right now. So I think there is a parallel issue, but not necessarily a one-to-one relationship between the request that's in front of you this evening or, or the proposal in front of you, but I think we can certainly spend some more time on this and bring it back at a later date, and as, as part of that, we can do some additional engagement with HPC and others.
Well, yeah, and I just, I just want to emphasize, we, the mayor was talking about the consistency, right, and then also, we mentioned individually, but I'm talking about how they integrate together, right, broadly, and I think you do understand, but I just want to make sure we highlight that, because that, somebody leaves, any of the, whether they leave bobs and then they leave pros, now they're out in the street and they're walking, you know, back in that back alley back there, that, that's the comprehensive safety, public safety I'm talking about.
I think we understand that between the chief and I.
There's footage, I believe, was provided, I think, from one of the businesses provided to our city. I haven't seen it yet, but.
Yeah, we have that, and code enforcement and police department are working on that investigation.
So that's my biggest, but I'd love to hear from my colleagues, you know, I mean, this is where I stand right now when it comes to the, for me, it's more the, the safety issue than it is the procedural, to be honest. That, for me, is the bigger issue, so, but I'd love to hear from others, so let's go to our vice mayor.
Given that it's my district, definitely want to dive in on this, but it's, but all the points that were raised by the mayor and council member soon, I'm fully in concurrence with. Safety and security for the historic district is, is, is critical, and I did see the footage and where we have, where there are cameras that, that showed those blind spots, and, and I know we have cameras throughout different parts of the city strategically, but for the specific alleyway that was mentioned or has been mentioned, it feels like in more of a tactical approach, it feels like it's, it's very important to have something there because as folks use it as a major through fare when they don't want to walk on Elk Grove Boulevard, especially as people in the late hours, they are intoxicated, they are walking a little wobbly, and there's, and that creates, that creates not only a health hazard and a safety hazard, but a reputation hazard where you do leave a lot left to be desired. And it kind of has the whole notion of extending these conditional use permits, it puts the whole concept in vain in that, in that respect. So anything that we can do to work together to help refine that, and I think that'll be good, and even, even for having the Historical Preservation Committee, even as a, as a extra set of eyes and ears or a voice for some of these establishments, especially like for some of ones being worked on right now. With that, I've seen some work being done for the, for the place, and it could be a restaurant down the road and may not, but this restaurant doesn't fall under the conditional use permit. But from a safety standpoint, we definitely want to make sure that when people come here, they want to feel like they're going to, they're coming in safe, they're going to go home safe, encouraging people to ride, to ride shares, not drive. Those are all things that are very important and part of the personal responsibility for individuals, but anything that we can do to put in some, some, some guardrails to, to make those assurances, especially for the consideration of the conditional use permits, would be very, would be very important, because it shows that not only are we being responsive, but we're also being responsible and requiring our business partners as they come in to the historic district to be responsible as well. Because we don't have a lot of establishments right now that fall strictly under the bars, breweries, wineries, and brew pubs. You have one on the way, you have Quatsa, and you have Dust Bowl. Every, every other establishment is pretty much a restaurant, and more restaurants that are not within the boundary lines of the historic district, we have new restaurants coming into the city. And so it's just one of those things as, as, as we're doing these, these new or expansions, that we're doing this with that mind on safety and security. It's, and, and by doing that, I think it keeps us a couple of steps ahead of the curve and, and really doing something that is going to be positive for, for, for the historic district and for Elk Grove as a whole.
Councilmember Spee?
Okay. So two things, let me make sure, I'm going to tread lightly on the first one, because if I say it wrong, it's going to sound a little weird. I'm, I'm more concerned about the enforcement of the CUPs that are existing, because I think they are, at least one of them may be the greatest problem that we're all, that we're concerned about. I know there's one that has been a continuous problem for many years and for a number of reasons, and I'm not going to try to out them, but, you know, they, they have been a difficult challenge for us. So I am concerned, obviously, always about the greater security and issues throughout the district, but I'm more, I would, I just want to encourage us more so to focus on enforcement of the conditional use permits that they currently have, because I think a lot of that would be cleaned up, just my personal feeling. Okay, so then the second thing is, I think I tiptoed through that appropriately. I didn't want anybody, I don't want anybody to think that I'm not about security, but what I'm saying is I think that the conditional use permit is where it's at.
But before, I do, I do, I do want to ask a quick question.
Yeah.
And with these, and I'm just going to say it, I need to ask a question. Is Babes one of the establishments that require a conditional use permit, or are they under ABC?
No. Babes has an ABC license that defines them as a restaurant.
And if they were to, if, and, and because of that designation, that's the one thing that prevents them from being required to have a CUP?
Yes, they predate the existing regulations.
Okay.
And they also have, and it's also a restaurant.
That too, Councilmember Spee.
Well, but here's, so yeah, I'm not going to, that's why I didn't want to dig into this, because I don't want to call anybody out, so I'll park it right there, but I think you got my point on that one. So, but then the other issue is, would we consider, or would we classify the Old Town SPA as a historic district plan?
Old Town is a historic district, and one of the purposes of the SPA is to further the preservation of the district, yes.
Okay. So when Ms. Andrews was, was discussing her concerns, you know, I, I said, well, what's the charter of the historic district? And so, excuse me, not the historic district, the historic preservation. So I went and looked up municipal code, chapter seven, paragraph 40, where am I? Oops, went too far. Paragraph five, I guess, review historic district plans. I, I mean, I'm, I just, I'm not going to, I think it needs to go to them first, so. I know there was no intent to do that, and if that's not what we intend to do, perhaps we should look at the municipal code, but it, it seemed clear to me that we, we need to put this back to the, the historic district, so.
So is the contention the word "plan" because there's nothing to review versus sort of bigger policy?
Staff's, yeah. The staff's historic interpretation, historic, of this has been, has been that details of the plan dealing with architecture, building design, the composition of the built form, that those are absolutely within that purview because of the definition that regulation of use is not necessarily that fits in, that given the feedback we're hearing tonight, that may be an oversimplification of our approach, and we can reset our expectations around that.
But, and I, and I don't think it should be any huge challenge. I think, I think it'll be fine, but thank you, I appreciate it, and, you know, so, that's where I'm, I'm perfect, if there's no penalties for pushing it back, then I think we should push it back.
Councilmember Robles.
Thank you to my council colleagues for the, the conversation, and I'm in support of pushing it back and willing to make the motion to push that. Or do we have to make a motion?
How, can we take a motion with caveats, with the conditions, or do you prefer to just bring it back? What's cleaner?
I think it'd be better to, to come back to you with more detail. That would allow us, obviously, the time to meet with the HPC, have that conversation, do other outreach and engagement along the way, allow staff time to coordinate between development services, police department, look at things more holistically to address your points. In that regard, we could either, you could either make a motion and take action to continue this to a date certain or a date uncertain. Just looking at calendars, I think to give us enough time and get through the holidays and staff availability, probably February 12th would be a reasonable target date for us to come back.
Okay.
If we're not ready at that point, we would just have a single-page staff report asking for further continuance, and likely at that point would trigger additional noticing.
That, that works for me. Can I get a motion to that?
So moved to that, and I'm just adding, Old Town Found
So move to that, and just adding Old Town Foundation in that review as well. Thank you.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Good work. All right, next item, please.
That'll be item 9.1, receive the fiscal year 2023-24 budget year-end report. Consider a resolution amending the fiscal year 2024-25 budget and fund balance reserve policy and improve allocation of reserves to the pension trust.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. I'm Nathan Bagwell, and I have the privilege of bringing forward the fiscal year 23-24 year-end budget report. I serve as your budget manager. But before getting started, I just want to acknowledge some of my teammates, the budget staff, Matt Ruiz and Cecilia Long, as well as our department heads, managers, and admin staff. It's really a team effort to bring this report forward for you. So we'll jump right into what we're going to discuss this evening. We're going to look at general fund revenues and expenditures, fund balance and reserve policy updates. We're going to receive an update on Measure E as of the end of the fiscal year, take a look at a couple special revenue and capital funds, and there is one proposed budget amendment for the current fiscal year. So let's get started with the general fund revenues. So what's the story here? Just briefly walking through, there's a lot of numbers, but the, what are these columns? Is the final revised budget. What that is, is that's the adopted budget, and any changes that happened all throughout the entire fiscal year is captured in that number. Next to that is the year-end estimate. What the year-end estimate is, it's something that we do that helps us inform fund balances, fund balance, really, at the end of the year, and it creates a basis for a starting point for the next year. Actuals, of course, is what, in fact, transpired. And then we're going to spend a lot of time with final revised budget versus actuals, just the straight budget-to-actuals number. Bottom line shows that as of the end of the fiscal year, general fund revenues exceeded the final budget by 4.6 million, so roughly 5%. Of the variances between the final budget and actuals amount, shown in the far-right column, the most notable dollar-wise is investments. The city's portfolio continues to exceed earning estimates relative to strategic management and higher interest rates. Among the variances, we also want to point out sales tax, which came in roughly $440,000 below the final budget. There were a handful of delayed payments at the end of the fiscal year that are anticipated to come in the first quarter of this fiscal year. So had those payments been timely, this fiscal, this revenue source performed within expectations. And now we're going to take a look at expenditures. At the end of the year, the city expended about 96% of the final budget, and this amounted to just under $85 million, and this represents a savings of $3.8 million budget to actuals. Vacancies in the police department, code enforcement, and city manager office, manager's office were the large drivers of the salary savings. There were also benefit-related costs in human resources that led to some additional savings. Operational savings stem from a variety of sources. Largest drivers of this $1.9 million savings were the police department and city manager's office. And the police department less than anticipated demand for certain program fees, programs and fees, coupled with utilization of internal resources for background investigations, which was an efficiency that saved money. And the city manager's office savings were driven by lower-than-anticipated costs for promotional outreach materials and reduced costs for consulting and marketing and economic development. Next, we're going to consider the fund balance reserve policy. And for some brief context, in April of 2019, council adopted a fund balance reserve policy which gave guidelines for allocated excess reserves. So simply stated, any revenue in excess of our expenses are bottom-line excess funds. What this policy does is it first funds a reserve for economic uncertainty, and subsequently an opportunity reserve. That's not proposed to change. Subsequent to that, any funds in addition to that have been split 50-50 between two reserves, capital reserve and economic development. Fast forward to February of this year, the city established a pension trust. What this does is it pre-funds pension obligations, it gives the city more control over when and how these funds are used. Two months ago, council adopted a pension funding policy with a goal, among its goals, was to accumulate an amount in this trust that's sufficient to generate investment earnings to cover the city's unfunded accrued liability payments to purse. So what this proposed revised policy is doing in this staff report is it's maintaining the funds for reserve for economic uncertainty and opportunity reserves, and then subsequent that, what was previously a 50-50 split, a third option is being presented, which is funding to, towards the pension trust. So the table before you is a breakdown of the general fund balance reserves as of the fiscal year 23-24. This table reflects the proposed revisions to the reserve policy as recommended in the staff report. The amounts proposed to be allocated to the capital reserve and economic development funds are consistent with the year-end estimates for the general fund that were in the budget document. It also allocates $5.8 million of excess funds towards the city's pension trust. Moving on, we're going to take a look now at Measure E. We have finished our first full year of activity. In the far-right column, we're going to note there are some variances here. The revenue came in $5.8 million above the final budget. And moving to expenses, the negative variance in salaries and benefits staffing costs of $169,000, which is just under 1%, largely due to positions being estimated when they were vacant. These positions were ultimately filled by employees at a higher salary step. Spending for operations continues to ramp up. A few large initiatives are being rebudgeted from last year into the current year. Some of these large initiatives include the city's interim homeless shelter, as well as spending on some economic development projects like Project Elevate and Grantline Business Park infrastructure. In capital, there was also a large pavement maintenance project to the tune of $1.5 million that rolled from last year into the current year. We'll take a brief look at some of our other major funds. In gas tax, revenues came in slightly higher than the final budget. Expenses were lower due to reductions in consulting professional services and less repair work than forecasted. Laguna Ridge Maintenance Services, Community Facilities District, we wanted to highlight because it's in the black for the first time in several years. Expenses are lower, park maintenance and some contracting expenses were brought in-house, sorry, park maintenance expenses were lower, and some contracting expenses were brought in-house to create efficiencies and save money. And the roadway fee, revenues higher than final budget, expenses lower, largely also attributable to the unpredictable nature of development reimbursements that did not occur in this previous fiscal year. For capital, major capital facilities funds, similar to roadway fee, revenues trended above the final budget, indicative of continued construction and permitting activity, and expenses were broadly in line with our final budgets. And we're going to move then to discussion of proposed budget amendment. Based on development activity thus far in the current year, staff is recommending an increase to the development services operating budget of $600,000. What this is for is relative to additional environmental reviews. So these costs will be reimbursed by project applicants. The proposed increase is allowing the city to enter into contracts and issue task orders with on-call environmental consultants. City is only obligated to pay the invoices once corresponding payment is made by the applicant, therefore, no projected impact to the city's general fund or other operations. So that brings us to a recommendation where staff is recommending the council adopt a resolution, amending the fiscal year 24-25 budget, as well as the pension reserve policy, and approve the allocation of reserves to the pension trust. This concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you for your presentation, sir. We do have a public comment, so at this time, I'll open up public comment opportunity and invite up Mark Graham.
Good evening, Mayor and council, Mark Graham, once again. The budget is one complicated can of worms, and it is something I don't envy you to have to deal with or understand, and I'm not going to make an attempt. So I'm going to focus on just a little bit and what bits and pieces that I've heard and seen and learned tonight. And to the extent I make mistakes, you can tell my intention is good and still in the spirit of helping. Everybody on the council and everybody on staff is committed to making the city a safe place to live, work, and play. And all the residents of Elk Grove are grateful for it. Part of that is public safety, part of that is preventing and solving crimes, and part of that is financial crimes. I understand that property crimes and financial crimes are not the same sort of thing. You know, the part I'm focused on is financial crimes. Anyway, what I want to say about, on this item is, well, it seems, but you've just heard the presentation, it's in the agenda, it's in the attachment 9.1, but there's revenue that came in $5.8 million higher than the estimate. There were, I've heard your staff say vacancies in the police department have led to savings, and so on. And my point is that there is, the city has money available to make the changes that I've mentioned in my earlier public comment about having more people to investigate financial crimes. I don't know if you can do it tonight. I know that you can't prove anything that's not on the agenda. Perhaps you could put it on the, I mean, section 10 is council comments, reports, and future agenda items. Perhaps the council would be moved to put this on the item for a future agenda. But is it possible to take some of the money that you have, which, just for lack of a more in-depth understanding, seems to be excess, you know, like the Measure E money, and allocate that to the police department, to the investigations unit, for the purpose of hiring two, three, four more financial detectives? Financial crimes detectives, financial crimes investigators? That's my question really for the council. From the agenda item, revenues for the first full year of Measure E came in higher than estimated, well, that's what your staff just told you, et cetera. And then I noticed something here. Okay, yes. Spending in operating categories continues to ramp up, and a few large initiatives that were planned for fiscal year 2023 and 2024 are now set to occur in the current fiscal year, such as spending for the city's interim homeless shelter. I mean, it sounds to me like there's a possibility that there's a way to make this work, and what it says, there was another section in here, oh, yeah, Measure E. A one-cent local sales tax to help address services that the community identified as important, including reducing crime.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, council and mayor. That's staff.
All right, that concludes the last of our public comment speakers. I will close the public comment opportunity. A quick question, not, let's see, my question is actually to you, Chief. Can you please remind us that we do an annual report, and they review all services?
We do an annual.
The company, and they make recommendations based on their findings?
Yes, ma'am. We do an annual report where we report out all of our successes throughout the year, and then we are evaluated as well. We have, to specifically address some of that, we do have the highest number right now of officers. We currently have about 20 that are graduating the academy, and when we finish them and they're training, we're going to be able to utilize bodies from patrol to go back into investigations to staff some of the areas that Mr. Graham has brought up.
Okay. Yep, I just wanted to get clarification once more on that, on the process. Any questions or comments from council colleagues? Yes, councilmember Sun?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick comment. Thank you, Nathan, for that great information. Nice to see things are performing well budget-wise, and I thank you for bringing back the pension trust. I think that's really important, so I just wanted to emphasize that, glad you, Mr. Paul, and thank you for doing that. I think it's very prudent. Happy to support the item.
Any other questions or comments?
Absolutely, I do. So this isn't so much a question specifically about anything on this. I appreciate it, thank you very much. You're managing the funds as great as can be expected, and I appreciate that. One of the things that city manager and I had an opportunity to talk about a little bit ago, a couple weeks ago, was about the, I hate to say it this way, the true cost of homelessness, right? What does that cost us, right? And it's, it can be discovered, it can be figured, but what I'm, so what I'm wondering, though, for when we go into our next budget cycle, is it, could we put a table in there? Do we have a table right now relative to homelessness? Is there, is there something we could put together? Because, you know, there is concern at large, right, throughout the state, throughout the United States, about how money is spent. I know that we track it well. I know that if we did a little bit of mathing, we could kind of figure it out, right? But I'm wondering if there's a way that we can add a table, if there isn't a table already. And I know that it's a little bit difficult to do because there are soft costs, there are costs that are, you know, maybe a cleanup or, you know, something like that that is, you know, has to be coded that way. But I'll park it there and just ask if we can do that in the next cycle. I don't want to change anything here.
Yes, we can. Like you said, the costs associated with addressing homelessness are spread throughout various departmental budgets, PD, Public Works.
Code enforcement, housing, all that stuff. Yeah.
To the extent that we can identify some of those costs that are spread and put them in a table that shows, here's the costs of addressing homelessness in our community, I think that's something that we can do.
Yes, I would appreciate that, because, I mean, there, it's, I think, you know, people want a solution, and we certainly want to give a solution, but people take a look at and go, well, my gosh, that costs a lot of money. 100%. It costs a lot of money, because the cost of homelessness on our communities are significant. So, anyway.
Are there any surrounding cities that are currently doing this?
Well, there was an.
I don't know of any.
There was an article today in Sacramento Bee of what Sacramento, so there's, I'm sure there's some, I don't know what they're using, I just saw the headline earlier today.
Right, I mean, it was, it was a, it was a large number for a small number of units, right? And some people are critical of that, and I understand being critical. But I guess what I'm trying to help people understand is this is where the costs are, and I completely and totally agree that it's expensive.
Yep.
But if we can show where it is, then I think people can understand it better. And, you know, if anything, I think it's good to show the total cost of homelessness, and maybe get some help from state or federal on these types of issues. So, anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Just thank you for the great work that you've been doing. Shows that we're really good stewards of taxpayers' monies, and I'm super excited to see what we've been seeing on Measure E. That means folks are shopping here locally, they're buying stuff, and they're investing here in Elk Grove. And we're doing good with Measure E's monies, so thank you.
So thank you, thank you, staff, for all of your hard work and due diligence. With that, I will look for a motion.
Move to adopt the resolution with the pension trust.
Second it.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, council comments, reports, future agenda items. I will start with councilmember Robles.
I will be going to Camp Roberts this weekend, so councilmember Spees will be the alternate for the JPA connector. Also, we had regional sand, our Saks sewer district today, nothing to report. I do know that councilwoman Sun did go and visit some of our local partners with Splash Elk Grove and toured, and got to see some of the cool stuff that they're doing out there. I'll let him talk a little bit about that.
Thank you. Councilmember Spees?
Yeah, well, enjoy Camp Roberts, it's not all that great. Wanted to let folks know that we have installed a new executive director for the Sacramento Metropolitan Cable Television Commission, Mr. Ayala. He intends to come out and have a conversation with each, with each member agency and discuss, you know, declining revenues relative to cable services. I think we've talked about it before. But, you know, he's new, so you can always ask him, we can always ask him to come and give a presentation on that on a slow day. But STA tomorrow, and that's it. Thanks.
Is this the same Ayala from Eric Wallet, or is this another?
No, so he retired from probation.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, excellent. Vice Mayor?
I have no committee activity to report, but tomorrow, Edna Baby Elementary School, they're commemorating Ruby Bridges, the young six-year-old who lived in New Orleans and was the first stone to drop for integration in response to Brown versus Board of Education. And it's going to be really cool, because the students are going to do a walk from Simpson Park to Baby Elementary School. It's a .3-mile walk, it's just going to be a short walk, but they're going to do it in a Mardi Gras style, and it's going to, it's going to be pretty cool, because based on the testimonial given by Ms. Bridges, is when she was being escorted by the U.S. Marshals to the elementary school.
Crazy.
She thought that they were having a Mardi Gras-style celebration of her going to the school. It's the complete opposite. It's the complete opposite. People were yelling at her, spitting at her, and being very nasty.
I can't.
And brave, brave young soul. And for her to, to look back at that and, and, and to turn this into a nonprofit organization for peace as part of the theme for, for today, that's going, I, I really commend the, the Elk Grove Unified School District for, for taking this initiative and doing that. So I wanted to share with that. And also on Saturday, a young, not, not a young group, it's a, they're old like me, Capital Business Connection, they're doing a, a gala giving back for love. And it's going to be a really nice event. It's been on social media of showing of who's going to be there. You're going to have Chef Ramiro Alarcon, he's going to be the main chef. Dennis Gaxiola is going to be the main, is going to be the main comedian. You have two other comedians, and you're going to have a guitarist, a really well-known guitarist there because the, the original choice is now unavailable based on some other commitments that have gotten in the way. But it's, it's going to be a really nice event and definitely encourage people, if they have not seen it on Facebook, definitely check it out. It's Capital Business Connection, Giving Back With Love. They're giving to three local charities. And it's, it's Rise Women of Elk Grove, the Veterans of Foreign Wars, and the Sacramento Zoological Society. And so every year, their plan is to, to identify three different nonprofit charities to give back to, but it's going to be a really positive event. Those were the two things that were, that were top of mind that, that I wanted to share. I have no committee activities to, to report because a couple of weeks ago, Sacramento Public Library Commission, we did meet a couple of weeks ago, but it was a very brief meeting. So that's my, that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Suen?
Thanks, Mayor. Vice Mayor, what time is that, Edna Bayde event tomorrow?
So they're going, the event is at 7:30, and it runs until 8:30, but the actual walking itself begins at 7:50.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'll try to be there. I have a Saicog board meeting tomorrow. And then just very quickly, that piggyback off of Councilmember Robles's comment, we have a Alliance Redwoods or Sly Park, depending if you guys remember for your kids or yourselves, right in our backyard in Elk Grove. So Splashed at the Nicholas Dairy through partnership with Sacramento Sack Sewer. They, they conduct these programs for teaching kids about science, and, and so it's, it's a pretty, pretty neat thing, and, and I hope, you know, you check it out, and the elementary schools will support it as, as well, bringing kids there, so.
Do they get to eat a worm?
Ooh.
You know, I didn't ask about the worm, but they got bees, they got the, the dairies.
You can just go in your front yard and eat them.
Hey, look, if, if you grew up in Sacramento area and you went to Sly Park way back in the day, you got to eat a worm.
They're branding, like, you know, the leather, they're, they're, they're making leather stamps and branding and drilling holes, you know, all these things in the original house barn at, at the Nicholas Dairy, right here, just in the, on the west side of Elk Grove where the sewer plant is. So it's right in our backyards. Anyway, that's it.
Maybe you don't want a worm from a sewer plant.
No, maybe not there.
Oh, God. This just keeps getting better and better. So I have something for our council to consider as it relates to our arts commission. We've had a, you know, we've asked commissioner, you know, two of our commissions to reapply just to bring in some fresh voices and maybe update sort of the mission and the work that takes place. We did it to our planning commission, of course, and then we've done it with our DNI commission and bringing in fresh voices. So one is opening up the seats so that we create an opportunity for some new voices. Secondly, I was at the California League of Cities last month, our vice mayor was there, and I was very impressed with, there was a vendor there that was talking about, it's called the creative economy, and it's typically integrated with the arts commission. So it's like the commission to the arts and a creative economy commission. So think about sort of refreshing and updating for a city of our size. Part of that, you know, so when we once started out, we had the multicultural commission, which now in modern day is the DNI commission. A lot of cities have grown from a, sort of an old-school arts commission to incorporating the creative economy, which then opens up opportunities for economic development as part of that. So two things, like, one is to open up the appointment process, and then secondly would be to consider expanding the role of reimagination of this arts commission. So what I would ask is, if it's possible with the concurrence of colleagues, is to have staff prepare a report and provide a presentation, if we can, at the next meeting, and I'll look to the city manager to see if this is possible, on the scope of the arts commission prior to the opening of the recruitment for the positions, and consider, consider rebranding the commission to the Arts and Creative Economy Commission, or leave it as is. But I think it would benefit all of us to get that presentation. I saw some great work that's taking place in cities across California. Other cities are doing this, even smaller cities. So it's an opportunity for us to showcase not only the diversity of the arts, but also tap into some of the others that are, you know, part of our visual and performing arts. So there's a whole umbrella that falls under the arts, within the arts community. So I don't know if, does that make sense? So that's two. One is to open it up, to reapply, and we encourage, of course, our commissioners to reapply, and then, but as part of that, to have a presentation on what this, and I, and I'm going to turn to you because I, city manager, I know that I shared with you some of these ideas earlier. Do we have enough material? Can you prepare something before the next meeting? Is that even possible?
Yeah, we can do that.
Mayor, just a question. So are you saying get the presentation, so we understand what it is first, before we open it, it up, right?
So I want to open up for, so regardless of whether we rebrand this arts commission to this new creative economy, let's reopen it like we've done with some of our other commissions. So that's one. The second part would be the presentation, and with the presentation, if it's something that, that we agree with, then we would factor that in. Before the recruitment process begins now, it would be, you know, for example, if we were to move down the path of a creative arts commission or creative economy commission that's incorporated within the commission of the arts, then that sort of new description would be part of the recruitment process. We don't want to put the recruitment out there and then maybe, you know, move forward on this and maybe not get the right people or the most interested people for this new version, if that's the path we choose to go down. But I think it would benefit all of us to have a presentation from staff on what this would look like. But either way, I want to open it up for, for folks to reapply.
So, yeah, that's how I understand it, is getting, getting that presentation before we start.
Yes. Yeah, I think that's important because we look at these in December anyways, as, as that's when we ask everyone to reaffirm whether, so it's timely.
Yeah.
And that's why I'm bringing it up now.
And so, and this creative, what did you call it, creative economy?
It's called commission to the arts and the creative economy commission.
So is it like turning art into part of our economic development, or that?
Yeah, there's a huge, yeah, and so, and I know that our city manager is also aware of some of what the work looks like in other cities. So it's, it's definitely broader. It's reimagining it into something much bigger, if that, if that's something that, that we're interested in looking at. But I think it, because you all weren't at the League of Cities to see some of this stuff, I think it benefits us to take a look at it rather than, you know, go to another conference. Let's see what some of these best practices are from other cities, what it looks like, the, the nexus with economic development, and what this reimagination could look like. If it's something that makes sense, then we could look at it. If it doesn't, then we can move forward as is, but still ask for that open enrollment to take place. So those, so I don't, if I could, if that's something, yes?
And, and Councilmember Suen, if, if you recall, Judy Tofolia and the Arts Advocacy Project, that was specifically what she was, was trying to do. And so I'm, I'm definitely happy to support. Thrilled to support, and I understand the timing to be, get the presentation.
Right.
Then do the, okay.
Yeah, that makes sense. Otherwise, you know, you want to get a full scope of what this looks like if, in the event we move forward.
Yeah. Okay. No, I'm supportive. Thank you.
And you have enough time to do that, sir? Okay. Okay. Very good. All right. That's all I have. So with that, we will adjourn today's meeting at 8:20. Thank you, everyone.